Live from Miami, Florida.
I am Linda.
And I am Bella.
And this is her podcast, Mostly Peaceful Latinas, where every week we will discuss current events, politics, pop culture.
And everything else related to the state of the clown world.
Hello and welcome to another episode of Mostly Peaceful Latinas. I'm your host, Bella.
And I'm Linda.
And before we get started, don't forget to smash that like and that subscribe button and show us some support. We are 100% fully self-funded, no lizard people, no Illuminati help here. So Linda.
Clown clown world news today, tons of it.
Clown world peaks.
A lot of updates that we have to give you guys today, but before we get into all of it, we just want to give you guys a little update on Miami Dade, which is the least woke city in America. So if you guys follow us on Instagram and all of our other handles, mostly Instagram, actually, you saw that we had a great win last week at the Miami Dade School Board. The community and parents and our friends at CCDF defeated the radical agenda that one of the school board members was trying to pass. They were trying to make October the LGBT history month because I guess prime month in June is not enough. And we were actually pretty shocked with the results because the new school board members that won, the ones that were backed by DeSantis, they don't actually start until November. And so we went in there with the expectation that perhaps we're gonna have a tight vote.
I don't think we had an expectation. We really weren't sure about how it was that it was gonna go. There was, because Perla had taken back her vote against the books just a few weeks ago.
Right.
We weren't entirely sure that we were gonna get a win, much less that we were going to sweep the school board.
So to be, to be fair, I thought that out of revenge, the two school board members that were voted out would actually vote yes, because they voted yes. So just so you guys know, last year was actually the first year that they introduced October as the LGBT History Month in Miami Dade schools. It was a seven to one vote. One of the school board members didn't attend, so she didn't vote. And so we said, how could it go from a seven to one to either a split vote or a majority vote, where they would vote no on this item? There was a lot of support at the beginning for the agenda. And then there was a lot of more support against that agenda. And ultimately, there was an eight to one vote against that specific item. And so I think what ended up happening is that we saw a change in tune in the school board members from last year. So last year, every single time DeSantis signed an executive order against the mask or anything, basically, they wiped their butt with that and said, we're gonna do what we want. We're not gonna follow whatever Tallahassee says, or the Department of Education. We're gonna do whatever we want in Miami Dade. And now I think that DeSantis has actually instilled fear in these members, not just them, but also the people. They never really thought that that many people would go against these two members and replace them for the new ones.
Yeah, I definitely think that their biggest fear and their biggest concern was the result of what they saw at the polls in August, right? Marta Perez, I think specifically, was a huge loss for them because Perla was going to retire anyway. So it was an open seat. But Marta had had a 24-year run at the school board. She was one of the conservative members of the school board. So I think that in watching kind of that blowback from us, the people, because they were, they were very emboldened in going against, against DeSantis all 2021. It's not until they see the response of we, the people. And I think that that probably also, in my theory, there's also probably some kind of connection where I can see why it would benefit the school board to have Charlie Crist and Carla Matts win the election. And I'm sure that the last thing that they wanted was more attention being brought to Miami Dade County, where Carla's home base is at, and where Latinos have really kind of taken the lead in, you know, conservative voting and kind of switching over to Republican voters. So I just always wonder, like, how much of it was fear and how much of it was strategy leading up to November? Like, had this vote been taken in December, where they already knew who the, who the governor was gonna be, would the results have been the same?
Maybe, maybe not. I do remember that a lot of the school board members, when they were voting no on this item, they were specifically citing the law that Don't Say Gay, AKA Don't Say Gay Bill. It's actually called the Parental Rights in Education. A lot of them were concerned that this would be illegal. So I think that it could be a combination of both of them saying, hey, like, parents are just not okay with this and we're kind of have to walk on eggshells moving forward because we saw the results in this past election. But I also think that it could be that they are a little bit hesitant to have the attention on them. With that being said, though, we had our usual suspects, about three Antifa members outside, who nobody cares about. Thank God Miami Dade does not have a huge presence of Antifa.
They don't, but I think it's a mistake to say that nobody cares about, because what we're watching is that the media, the national media, will pick up stories generated by these three or four Antifa nobodies and then blow up that story as a representation of who was at the school board meeting.
So they're blowing up a Proud Boys story right now, which Bella can, can tell you about. And, you know, we'll tell you what we saw from the back scenes, right?
Yeah. So I mean, first of all, it's, there was that really powerful video, I actually posted it on my Telegram channel, where the Christian Coalition had taken a knee and they were doing a prayer before the, the meeting. You know, there was parents there, there was detransitioners there, there was members of the LGBT community there against the HB 11 that would have made October the Trans Day. I'm sorry, not Trans Day, but the LGBT History Month. And what's happening is that, of course, the usual suspects, which is three or four Antifa people that show up. Normally, they show up with notepads, ready to take names of parents. They take pictures of attendance at these meetings.
To dox you on Twitter later.
On Twitter.
By Billy Corbin and Jenny Lee Molina.
And like, the natural balance of this world that we now live in, wherever there is Antifa, there tends to be a Proud Boy present. Majority of these parents don't know a Proud Boy, have no affiliation to Proud Boys, have never been in contact with a Proud Boy. The truth of the matter is that as much as I don't feel any which way about the, the, the presence of the Proud Boys there, because I just don't feel like it's that significant, when you see 50, 60, 70-plus people and you see four Proud Boys to the four Antifa people that are there. But to add more to that, it's like, what, what exactly do you expect will happen? If you don't want Proud Boys at school board meetings, ban Antifa.
Right. And it, and it's actually really funny that our friend Billy Corbin has it out for us to say that we are childless and we don't have any say in the school board meetings. You don't have a child either, son. You know, one. And two, all of your little Antifa members, including that troll Elizabeth Sanchez, also don't have kids. None of Antifa has kids. In fact, the Proud Boys actually have kids in the school board, in the school system. So they have more of a right to be there than Antifa does. All Antifa is doing is going based on their ideology of the marginalized and the LGBT and the non-binary. So they're there to just cause trouble, to scream at them, and then cause the Proud Boys to react, get it on video, and then you can send it up to the media to create this narrative. The parents were being harassed by Proud Boys, another far-right extremist, when that is not the case at all.
Actually, let's, let's show the, the Proud Boys attacked the parents. Let's show the picture of the parents.
The parents.
That's the parents at the, at the school board meeting this weekend. These are the parents. Like I said, they show up with the intent of intimidating. And then the press likes to put blinders on and act like it's just these innocent people opposing, you know, that, that are in favor of the month and all these fascists don't want it there, these Proud Boy fascists, completely ignoring the presence of actual members of this community, respected members of this community, in an effort to tarnish, which is what they've done to everything, you know?
There was also a student, a past Miami Dade student, I believe, that she is about 21 years old, a detransitioner, and she says that around ninth grade, I guess, she was encouraged by the Miami Dade, I guess, system, the teachers, the counselors, to start questioning her identity and her sexuality and her gender. And because of that, because of the school system, by the way, she was not in favor of this. And it's funny, because they don't mention her, they don't talk about her. All they talk about is hate, homophobes, transphobes in Miami Dade. And there's this girl, this young girl, whose life has changed. And, you know, there's a lot of things that she can't take back, like the double mastectomy that she got because of these teachers and these counselors in the Miami Dade school board system that in, that made sure to groom her, this is why we call them groomers, into changing her gender, right?
Correct.
Did I say that right? So her, she had a very powerful and sad speech, and she said, this is why I oppose it. Because in ninth grade, we had a counselor who started to tell us that we needed to question our identity and to identify as we wanted. Later on, I was led into the path of taking hormone therapy and then getting literally her breast.
Removed.
Removed. And now she's detransitioning and she started her own project. I believe it's like the Rainbow.
Something or another.
She started her, her own nonprofit organization to try to bring light into this detransition stories that we actually see a lot of, but the media likes to ignore them. There was another girl in California that her speech, I think she's, her name is Chloe. And her speech was also very powerful and it defeated, I don't know if people know this, but California was supposed to be like a refugee state for trans kids. They basically wanted to lure in kids to California to change their gender. And that bill was shut down and mostly had to do with her testimony. You know what I'm saying? So there was a lot of commotion around this, this topic. In fact, they're still trying to paint Miami Dade and Governor DeSantis and the school board as these homophobes, racist, transphobes, hateful group of people. Now we want to move on to update from Dark Brandon's regime. Things are getting darker by the day.
Things are getting dark, guys. Things are getting dark. If you haven't considered a dual citizenship, now might be the time to consider.
That might be the time. There's only a few places on earth that are not pro-America. So we may be looking at Russia or China. I don't know. But pretty much, right before coming on the podcast to film, we find out that Mike Lindell has been, or Mike Lindell was eating at an Arby's in Minnesota, and the FBI came and seized his phone and told them he couldn't tell anybody that they were seizing his phone. Why is this happening? Well, it's happening, it's happening all around the country, actually. Fifty, fifty Trump allies were either served, right? Either served, subpoenaed, or raided. A lot of these people were part of the Stop the Steal movement, they were trying to challenge the election. I know the Women's for America First.
Right.
Were actually raided as well, because their attorney went on Tucker Carlson. So we have a full-on fascist regime from the people that say that MAGA is actually the problem, the extremists, the fascists. And, and so what Joe Biden has done is weaponized the FBI, the Department of Justice, to go after his political opponents. Which is actually funny, because this is what Trump said he would do. I mean, he didn't say he was gonna use the DOJ, but he did say that he was gonna go after the swamp.
What I do remember is an entire country shutting down and an impeachment over the accusation that Trump was going after his political opponent for a perfectly fine conversation.
With Zelensky, right?
With Zelensky, right? And they tried to impeach Donald Trump over this, because they claimed that even though there was sufficient evidence to go after Joe Biden, in fact, Joe Biden was a wanted man in Ukraine up until he becomes president and his power reinstated over the, over the country. They, they wanted to impeach Donald Trump for this. And now here is Dark Brandon using the full force of every intelligence agency that we have, whoever operates the puppet. And not a peep from the left. In fact, they're cheering him on, they're cheering on.
But you know what? That's expected from his base and, and Democrats who are in power, whether in the House or the Senate. But what really pisses all of us off is where is the GOP? Why is the GOP allowing, you know, allowing the FBI, allowing the DOJ, allowing these agencies that are supposed to work for the people to target their political opponents? They're not doing anything at all. They're not questioning this. They're not saying, hey, where is the motive? We still have a lot of people in the House and Senate to say, what the hell is going on? Put a stop to this completely. And what I think it may come down to is the states. How are the governors going to handle this situation to stop the Brandon regime from Washington DC and to come into our states to raid Trump supporters?
You know, one of the things that's really standing out to me right now is that there's definitely a narrative being built leading up to the election, right? Like, this is all so that you can have the headlines of 50 Trump people, you know, are raided in the middle of the night. The entire thing is an effort on to slow down the momentum that conservatives have going into the 2022 midterms. I was at an event this weekend, and it was an event off in West Palm, forgot the America, America something or another, put the event together. And they were basically discussing how there are a lot of election officials all over the country that are basically amping up to commit fraud and then protect themselves with DC lawyers and with press, that they're being attacked, violently attacked or harassed or slandered. I believe that they made a comment about the supervisor of elections out of Broward County.
Of course.
Has preemptively said that he's concerned for his safety and the safety of other employers in the Broward County Electors Office. And when he's asked if he's received any threats, he says, no. Well, then what are you scared of? What are the, what's the narrative that's being created?
They always build a narrative. That's what they've been doing.
Well, that's what I did. I did a quick search of like, you know, election official harassment and just, I mean, dozens of different cities, like, just preemptively getting ready to say that there is, you know, that they've been threatened with violence or whatnot. So realistically, what I wonder and the idea that I have is, what are the polls going to look like? Is it going to be where there's going to be an, an effort to physically stop people from voting in November?
I think that's possible, but I think it's more possible that they are trying to finesse, I wanna say, you know, finesse certain things in very corrupt counties like Broward County. And I talked about this two podcasts ago, where during the 2018 DeSantis and Gillum election, they kept counting votes for an entire week. And that is why now you see Charlie Crist saying that DeSantis only won by 25,000 votes, which is 0.4% of the vote. And so they're kind of already building this storyline that, hey, it's possible that DeSantis loses the election in Florida. He's not that popular. His ideas are not that popular. There's so much negative press around him. And really and truly, he didn't really win Florida by that big of a margin. So now it's very possible for him to not win at all. So just keep that in mind, because there's a lot of overconfident, you know, Republicans out there. We see it online all the time. We see the excuses that they make to get involved. People have to work. We have children. We have this. We have that. And meanwhile, the left is willing to wake up five hours before sunrise, if they have to, to be able to work and also work at the ballot box or be an election supervisor or count the votes. So.
Which, let's actually lead into that. They're currently attacking conservatives that are involved in the political process.
Right.
So there's news, every major publication is currently talking about how General Flynn has signed up to be a poll worker in Sarasota. And it's mind-boggling. Somehow, they all feel justified in attacking him for that, the same way like last week, they attacked him for being a part of the local REC, the Republican Executive Committee in Sarasota as well. We've seen similar things happen down here in South Florida. Like we spoke about earlier in the episode, what they'll do is that they'll take the presence of a handful of Proud Boys. And then they will use that to say that the entire Miami Dade GOP has been taken over by Proud Boys. So 60-something-plus members, and because there's six members that happen to be Proud Boys, they'll say that the same way, they'll do the same thing with the school boards, right? They'll say that because there was four, four Proud Boys present, they've taken over school boards. And it's, I think that it's interesting how, again, to go back to General Flynn and how it is that he's been villainized now, is the authority that the left thinks that they have over setting a moral code over who is qualified to serve in the civic process and who isn't, based off their moral code.
Right, right. Because it, it happened here with a, with a local Proud Boy. Again, we don't have any.
I mean, you really do not have a relationship with him, right?
I don't have a relationship with this man, and I personally don't like him.
Nonetheless, what's right is right.
There was an entire, was there an article, of course, written by the Miami New Times?
Sure is.
He's also a member of the local RNC. And there was a whole article that this Proud Boy was a poll watcher and this and that. And it's like, there's nothing illegal about that at all. Like.
How is this newsworthy?
This is not newsworthy, but of course, we know that the Miami New Times is a communist paper in bed with the local Antifa, in bed with Democrats, so they just weaponize it whenever they like to hit their political opponents. Even when they asked, I think, the Miami Dade election supervisors, why this man was allowed to be a poll, poll watcher, right? They had to respond back and be like, well, there's nothing illegal. There's nothing really stopping him from doing it. Like, they're, they're, just because you guys don't like this person.
We don't like his ideology and therefore he shouldn't be a poll worker?
Yeah. You know, we also, we also, I just saw a video right before.
What do they say? What do they claim? That he's been arrested in the past? I mean, so has Jenny Lee.
Right, yeah.
So has Sonia. So has Carla Matts. These people have also, actually, it's, it's actually great that you guys bring that up. I want to say that I, myself, have never been arrested. I am a great contributor to society, unlike Jenny Lee and Sonia Diaz, that have all been arrested for fraud.
Right, absolutely. You know, speaking of extremism and what's the biggest threat to America, you had Secretary of Homeland Security Mayorkas come out with a video and a statement saying that the biggest threat is domestic terrorism, no, domestic extremism, anti-government sentiment, false narratives in online platforms. What this basically means is there's just gonna, before the election, and I kind of, I kind of thought about this today when I was doing my hair, I'm like, we're at the point where, you know, it's like the scene from the movie where they go like this.
From the Hunter Games?
Yeah, like from the Hunter Games. It's like, okay, like, may the odds be in your favor, because from now until the election, get ready for the massive, the platform of conservatives and everybody on YouTube, on Twitter, on Instagram, on Facebook. You gotta be very careful what you post and don't post, because everything is about misinformation and disinformation. So if they think that you are a disinformation agent, they're going to ban you. Facebook put out a statement last week that they had banned 500 accounts related to the Proud Boys or extremists and that. And they put out this whole statement from their global meta-office very proudly, saying that all these people were permanently banned and they were able to find more accounts attached to them. They're completely off the platforms. So they're gonna do this for sure, especially on Twitter. I think there's already like a Twitter little, what do you call it, like a, like a box or like, like, like a office of democracy or something like that, basically like, hey, do you know how to identify misinformation? Do you know how to identify fake news? It's like, yeah, basically, everything that you guys put out is fake news.
That's an easy way. Everything you guys ban is what actual news is.
It's actually what you guys put out. So once again, it's just building the narrative to crack down on the opposition. Anybody who's a conservative, anybody who's a, I, I think even libertarians are a threat to them, to be honest with you. So.
It's all about the midterms. It's all about the midterms. Speaking of the midterms, let's talk about Lindsey Graham's latest okey-dokey move that seemingly.
Lady G.
Seemingly can seem to the right, like, well, Lindsey Graham is putting forth an abortion, I'm sorry, a ban on abortions after 15 weeks. And I just think that, what a great time to do that, right?
It was so random, too. I like, I opened up Twitter, I'm like, what is, what is Lady G saying?
Like, Lady G.
Come up with this.
First of all, Lindsey, there is absolutely nothing that you can do to make you sound-based. It's 2022, we're all done with you. We're all over you, conservatives, communists. We're all done with you. This is such a blatant move to fire up the left. Putting an abortion ban, the one topic that you know they've been trying to get everybody riled up with since the beginning of the summer, and Lindsey Graham decides that right now is the adequate time for Republicans to be the face of an abortion ban prior to 15 weeks. Lindsey Graham can truly suck it. This is, this is the dirty politics that most people will miss if they're not paying attention. To the unknowing eye, you will see this as a conservative move, a conservative who wants to ban abortion because he's pro-life. When you're an expert at the psyops, like those of us that are continuously put into them.
And he knows that he can't get it through the House, because we don't have the House. So what is he even doing? This is something that you would discuss after the midterm elections, if you were to gain seats in the House, which we don't even know if that's actually gonna be possible, because, I don't know, Scott Presser doesn't seem very, very convinced that we are. But this is just, once again, a total move by a rhino, by Lindsey Graham, who everybody, as Bella said, hates. And there's a lot of commentary online from Mike Cernovich, a lot of conservatives are like, they see through it. They see it. They're like, this is, this is like your typical move to sabotage your own party.
Right. Well, it's become the talking point of the left all day. That's all they've been talking about. Lindsey Graham, we knew they were gonna get authoritarian. Now they wanna ban abortions at 15 weeks. We told you they were coming for women's bodies. It's like, bro, Lindsey Graham does not represent us, bro. Like, we do not claim Lindsey Graham. We do not invite him to the cookout. He is not one of us. This is like.
Coming to San Francisco Sunday.
No, absolutely not, man. So I, again, I just think that it's the idea, it's so, when you see it, now you see it. And you see that it's a move to attack his own party, regardless of how many conservative bells and whistles or how many MAGA hats you put on it. It's still a shit move from a, from a Republican, name only, looking to sabotage his party right before the elections.
Absolutely. You know, one thing that we can't emphasize enough, and almost every single episode, we talked about the unhinged liberal media, unhinged reporters, unhinged journalists. But I think that Taylor Lawrence from the Washington Post is somebody that is actually mentally ill and should be institutionalized. And I don't say this lately. Like, I don't say this because I don't like her politics. I think that she's just not well. Like, not even well enough to keep a job. So if you guys don't remember, Taylor Lawrence is a journalist, or what they call journalist, for the Washington Post. And she has made her main target, the girl who runs Lips Up TikTok. She has written, I don't know how many articles on this woman, Shia, I forgot her last name. And every single week, Shia shows Taylor Lawrence down her DM on Twitter, down her DM on Instagram, the emails that she sends her with the new hippies. The newest hippies that they're trying to make around Shia is that she is inciting domestic terrorism against hospitals that perform transgender surgeries on children or provide gender-affirming care, whatever you wanna call it. There's no proof of that. There's zero proof that because she's been exposing, not even exposing, that she documents what's already out there from these hospitals or the teachers on TikTok, that this is the reason why there was actually a false threat in the Boston Children's Hospital. That never occurred. In fact, the president of the B, what is it called? The Funny Page? No, the, the, the one that makes, like, the Funny B page. What is it called?
Babylon?
Yes, the Babylon B. Seth, whatever his name is, and somebody else. They're actually offering out $40,000 to, to confirm and to find out who was the person that called the Boston Children's Hospitals with this hoax and this bomb threat. But of course, the left doesn't wanna help, because they'd rather just continue to push the narratives that conservatives are causing this domestic extremism through their content. And so no one's come forward with a name as to who did this.
I mean, behavior like Taylor's has to be documented, right? The fact that these people exist to harass a group of people or one or two people.
They're private individuals, Bella.
Yeah, they are private individuals. But I mean, Linda, we're seeing it here on a regular basis. The way that these people can just operate off behind that Miami Antifa page, and they can dox parents.
The Miami New Times. That's what they do.
Use the Miami New Times to cover up all of their stories or to echo out their stories. And then what happens? National media sees a publication like the Miami Times posting it. So now it picks it up and it sources the Miami New Times. The Miami New Times sourced the dickwad at the Miami Antifa page, who's actually Billy Corbin, or actually Sonia V. Diaz, or actually Jenny Lee Molina. It's like, it's, it's, it's a complete cycle of what it is that they do. But these people are allowed completely to operate on the internet. I could tell Twitter right now, this, these people, for the last year and a half, have made over 150 posts about me, and it wouldn't make a lick of difference. They completely ignore that. But this is happening everywhere. These trolls are allowed to fester on Twitter.
Absolutely.
They exist because of Twitter. If Twitter sees us to exist, they cannot get away with this kind of behavior on Facebook or on Telegram or on Instagram. This only works. This kind of harassment only works for them if they're allowed to stay on Twitter.
Right.
Which is, goes back to my article, you don't want extreme, to, to the point that we've made before. You don't want extremism on Twitter? Cool. I get it. You guys already banned the Proud Boys. Alright, cool, I get it. Why is Antifa allowed to operate on Twitter?
The people who work at Twitter are Antifa as well.
Yeah.
You know? So today, there was, I think, a hearing or, or national security hearing and Twitter, or an ex-Twitter executive member, somebody from Twitter, was testifying. And one of the things that he said was that about 4,000 Twitter employees have access to personal data that they can use to dox you. So there's people inside of Twitter working with these anonymous accounts, more than likely doxing private citizens that they don't like. Do you know how I know that this is a fact? Number one, because I know, I know. Number one, cause I know, I know about two people personally that are extremely far left who work for Twitter. Number one. But number two, last year, when Twitter put out their new policy that Um, they couldn't post, uh, pictures and videos of private people because that was, you know, Causing the, the whole doxing, whatever. Antifa went nuts and within a week, Twitter reversed that ban back. Because they do whatever Antifa wants. Antifa exists because of Twitter. I showed you, I think, an example today, and, and, and it came from Andy Ngo, Where there was, um, some Antifa members, they went over to Asheville And they, I, I don't know exactly the crimes that they committed, but they were held, Sorry, in jail, and they, the bail was about nine thousand dollars. Within hours, within hours, They managed to gather comrades on Twitter through GoFundMe, through all these things, get their bail peeled and they would walk right out.
Yeah. If they, if, if it wasn't for Twitter, if the, if Twitter didn't of Foster a safe space for Antifa, Antifa will cease to exist. It's like, if there was ever a case built against Antifa for domestic terrorism, as it should be, I cannot imagine that Twitter wouldn't be involved in a lawsuit like that because of the protection that they offer them.
You know, it's, it's, it's actually, we should probably bring up to certain people and organizations that they need to do a full report On the extremism that is happening inside of Twitter by Antifa and its employees as well. And they need to go to lawmakers and Republicans need to pressure Twitter to ban all these Antifas off.
We're not gonna stop until that happens. We've said it once and we'll say it again. What, what, what they've done to us? What, what big Corporate million dollar PR firms and media publications have done to us, to this community hiding behind Antifa pages? Mark my words, that I will go to my grave seeking legislation that protects people from what we've had to go through For the last year and a half.
It's just kicking them out. You, you cannot be allowed to operate anonymously And try to ruin people's lives without your face plastered in it.
Yeah.
Going back to the Taylor Lawrence cunt, um, Taylor Lawrence today targeted somebody else, a YouTuber, a private, um, another private citizen. And she wrote him an email and said, we're gonna write a hit piece about you and your misogynistic YouTube channel. Because he had a bunch of Amber Heard, uh, anti Amber Heard, uh, I don't know, videos or whatever he has. And so now, she's moved on to someone else who she thinks is a misogynist Simply because he didn't take the side of Amber Heard and probably took Johnny Depp's side. So.
The fact that she took Amber Heard's side says a lot about her, right?
Taylor Lawrence is somebody that should be institutionalized.
You're not well, dear. You're not well, seek help.
Like, you, you, not only should you seek help, you should quit your job, you should go into One of these retreats or whatever that they pay like ten thousand dollars a month or a week for.
Fully on your mental rehabilitation.
You should not be writing articles.
Absolutely not.
She, um, another thing that she did that was crazy is now she's targeting bullying And harassing an MSNBC reporter. So now she's, she's also going after her own kind Because I guess she did this interview with an MSNBC, another woman, an MSNBC reporter, I don't know her name right now. Um, but basically it was about online harassment of women. So Taylor is in this interview and she's pretending to be the victim and she's crying and she's like, oh my God, like, I'm just harassed. And that's why I don't have my, my reply notifications open on Twitter because Just men are so misogynistic and they're doxing me and they hate me. And the reality is, is that you're a piece of shit. Um, and this woman, she did her reporting fairly, but what she wanted was for her to like Take her side and go above and beyond and, yes, Taylor, you're the victim, you're the good person. Everyone else is just a piece of shit and they hate you. And that didn't happen. So now she's harassing this MSNBC reporter going off Saying to never trust the media, that, I mean, this is somebody that works for legacy media, talking about you can't trust legacy media. Like, where is it gonna end with this girl? Where is it gonna end with her? Um, but you know, it's just, it's just, she's not the first one. Um, we, Brian Selter, who's no longer Uh, on CNN was another propagandist. And, you know, we, we, we see that it's not getting any better at all With the reporters. So I don't know where this is gonna end.
Well, you gotta wonder the spin that CNN is taking right now, right? Because they canceled Seltzer, who else did they cancel? They canceled a couple of people. They canceled Lemon. They've canceled, and they say they're not done. They say they're gonna cancel more people. So it's interesting to kind of see what direction it is that CNN is taking. Are they kind of bowing out of the fight? That's so to speak, considering their tanking ratings?
Well, the guy did say, the guy did say that he wanted a more balanced base channel Because he realized that conservatives are actually the majority in this country.
Oh, shocking.
People were not happy with their, uh, propaganda network. So they are taking a little bit of a turn Uh, towards a, what he likes to call a more balanced, uh, commentary.
Oh, well, that's interesting. So it does have to do with the tanking ratings. I can't imagine that they were willingly Out there changing their programming. Um, but yeah, that explains the, that, that explains it because we are in control. We do make up the majority.
Like, well, one, one of the things that Brian Selter really, um, fought for, or what he was trying to expose Was that he had a meltdown one time saying that there was YouTubers, conservative YouTubers Who had more views than, than like CNN during the day. Yeah, because everyone hates you. Like, everyone hates you crying, your lies, your propaganda. Everyone, for the most part in the country, except a very small minority of Americans that are still under your spell, Don't wanna watch you. You're not enjoyable, you're not funny, you, you, you're miserable. And so, you know, he had, and I, and I think he specifically was talking about figures like Brandon Tatum and stuff like that. We have very, very large platforms on, on YouTube and he was, you could just tell that he was jealous. But I think now he's off to Harvard or one of these universities, like most of these people do, they either go work for another network Or they go become professors at universities so they can continue spreading their nation.
Continues propaganda, right? It's like, take the propaganda out of TV and put them in the schools. I mean, it's where they exist anyways. It's not like the environment is any different. It's like a swamp in Louisiana versus a swamp in Florida.
Absolutely.
Uh, so the Safety Act out of Illinois.
This is, this is what we like to call the purge law.
Yeah.
And this is coming to a city near you. Don't, don't think that this is just like an Illinois problem. This is actually Something that they want to replicate all over the US, which is a purge law.
It's, basically this new law will remove all cash bail. Uh, basically for every horrendous crime that you can think of, including murder and kidnapping and armed robbery. And these people are going to be able to walk into jail and walk right back out because Uh, Chicago has decided, Illinois has decided that they are going to be doing away with cash bail, Which like Linda say, will end up leading to a time of purge. Cause now criminals are not held accountable. We're gonna see something similar to what it is that we've seen in California, Where when you take away petty, uh, petty theft laws or whatnot, you've got organizations like Uh, even Starbucks, Walgreens, all these stores that are now taking out their stores from these neighborhoods Because they can't do anything to hold criminals accountable. So they just take the business out. So now if you live in one of these cities, You no longer have access to the local Starbucks or to your local CVS or whatever the heck it is. Now this is that times a hundred magnified. So there's nowhere to run, uh, if you, there's nowhere to run. Hide your kids, hide your wives. They're coming for everybody. They're coming for everybody. No, I think that, you know, this is something that has been going on since twenty twenty. This is something that they've been fighting for since twenty twenty to do away with cash bail. They claim that, that, that bail is a racist construct and that then only allows, it makes Uh, what is it that they claim? That it makes our judicial system based off equity as opposed to fairness. So now.
We know that these policies are unpopular because even in deep blue San Francisco, they recalled Chesa Boudin or whatever his name is. Who was an actual Antifa terrorist. His parents were literally part of a terrorist attack many years ago. And obviously that's passed down to this Crappy shitty person. Um, but I think Something that happened this week, did you, did you see there was another rapper that was killed for his jewelry in LA? I don't know who he is, never heard of him. But I do know, um, on Hollywood Unlocked, Which is owned by Jason, Jason Lee, who's a huge social, social justice gay man. Um, and he's there like, oh, like the, the post said something like, you know, we, we gotta stop doing this to one another. This is the third rapper, you know, he's just going in to, 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 to buy this, to buy that in our own neighborhoods. Like, this is what we have been telling you. You guys have made the white man into this boogeyman, the ones that, 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 we're being killed by white people. They're coming to us, they're lynching us in the streets, the white man, the white man, the women. It is your own people who are doing this to you. Do, do you see what I mean? We're not saying that there's not white on black crime. There's crime Against everybody. But the reality is that the biggest threat to the black community are their own. And it's been like this for a very long time. Finally, today, I see the Hollywood Unlocked Talking about, we can't keep doing this to one another. It's like, yes, this is, this is literally what we're trying. We are still living with the consequences of the twenty twenty summer of love. The laws that came after them, the purge, everything that happened that summer, We are still dealing with those consequences.
Yeah, absolutely.
Of the, the racial bullshit, BLM, the guy is now being investigated for ten million dollars. Nothing went to this community. You had four, five, uh, funerals for George Floyd. You had this entire charade for a man that would, that, that's, I'm sorry, he wasn't a worthy man. You put on this whole show for this man and guess what? They stole the money.
They bought themselves houses, they went on vacations, they bought themselves fancy bags, private securities. That's where your Act Blue BLM money went. So that, that's where, where your donations are going. It's just so blatant, the fact, the lack of care that they have. They don't care about black men.
No.
They don't care about black men. They don't, it's, it's all political, right? Cause if they did, You know, and it's something that we saw during the twenty twenty, they don't care about protecting black conservative men.
No, they don't.
They don't even care about protecting black, uh, uh, conservative gay men. They don't care about any of it. It's only Ironically enough, it's only the black men that the white men tell them that they should be worried about. So when the, uh, George Soroses of the world tell you to be appalled, you know, um, what's her name? I'm drawing a blank, uh, Candace. Candace, I remember in twenty twenty gave a, uh, she had a live And it, it was a live that went viral where she spoke about how She didn't understand why it was that the black community elevated the worst amongst them.
It's true, like George Floyd.
You don't, you, you don't.
Statues of that guy.
Right.
You don't, you don't elevate attorneys, heart surgeons, inventors. No, you elevate
The guy that was using a fake twenty dollar bill. Nobody's saying that he deserved to die the way that he did. Please don't, uh, misconstrue what we're saying. But this wasn't a man of quality. This is a man who had held a pregnant woman at gunpoint and stolen from her. This is a man who got caught with fake bills. This is a man who tried to get away from his arrest by ingesting a deadly amount of fentanyl That ended up playing a role in his death. And this is the man that they've, uh, you know, celebrities and, and world leaders And, and, and communities have lifted up as a martyr of sorts to represent A, a, a black community that, why? Why should a black community be represented By someone that doesn't, that, that shouldn't have any kind of representation?
Have you seen how they replace statues? You know, it's like, uh, the, 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 the white supremacists or the, what is it, the Confederate statues in certain, in certain cities, especially like, uh, You know, Democrat cities. And some of the things that they have replaced, the objects that they have replaced these statues with are embarrassing. I think in Louisiana, I think in New Orleans, there is like a hair pick. Like a hair pick statue.
I would be so offended.
In New Orleans, it's offensive to the black community, right? It's no different than the controversy this week where people are, they didn't care about, you know, it was talking about it, the Little Mermaid. Um, yeah, it, it, you're right, it's a fictional character, who cares? It could, it could have been a, a, you know, A Latina, it could have been a white person or black person, who cares? But the reality is that You should be demanding for your own stories, your own, uh, fairy tales or whatever it is, newer ones to be part of your culture. Cause this is the same group of people.
I mean, Black Panther was one of the top selling movies of all time, until one of the biggest
Whole black cast.
Superhero dynasties now that exist, they're in every major superhero movie. They, they broke all sorts of records, more of that.
Look at Encanto. Encanto is a brand, Encanto is a brand new, uh, Disney movie representing the Colombian culture. And I called her and said, this is one of the best representations that I've ever seen of the Colombian culture. It's, it, it, it shows every single different demographic that we have, from the more indigenous looking people To the more, uh, African, uh, looking people. Everything was perfect. Geographically, everything, you, you, you can have that for your own race. Like, you, you, you don't have to just want to, to Uh, replace the white mermaid or Cinderella. And now it's also Snow White, it's a Latinx woman. Um, to be able to say, we, we replace them, we're getting the, what is it that they call it? Um, there's a word for it.
The, um, uh, representation.
The representation.
I thought you meant the reparations.
No, the representation that we deserve. It's, it's, it's kind of lame, but whatever it is, what it is. Um, with that being said, something very interesting.
Really just not, I'm, I'm, I'm honestly, like, the whole Little Mermaid thing isn't necessarily like affect me that much. It's like, if they're gonna take characters and they're gonna turn them around and storylines, like, that, with me, it's more the The, the LGBT characters, that the straight characters that are now turned into LGBT characters, which we'll see a lot like in Netflix and then pro, and programming of that sort, you'll take a character.
Like, Dumbledore. They did it to Dumbledore. Yeah. My friend Stephanie called me today and she's like, you know, we started watching the new movie. I don't know what, what it is. I guess it's on HBO. And one of the first things that they talked about was Dumbledore being gay. I'm a Harry Potter, uh, fanatic. It's actually, I think the first book that I read when I was young and I got here in English From, from top to bottom. I've read every single Harry Potter book, watched every single Harry Potter movie. And nowhere in the book does it ever talk or, or even allude to the fact that Dumbledore was gay. And we're talking about years later, I don't know if it's twenty years or fifteen years later, all of a sudden Dumbledore is gay.
Yeah, I mean, they did the same, didn't they do the same thing to Buzz Lightyear? They made Buzz Lightyear gay as well. They've made, uh, Uh, they didn't, they do it with one of the superheroes that Trump was calling it, like.
Yeah, I mean, everyone's gay.
Everyone's gay. So to me, it's like the, the race representation, it's like, whatever. Cause at the end of the day, like a character, still a character to me. But when you change a, when you add to a storyline that otherwise could have Proceeded perfectly fine without inserting sexuality in it, that's the part that feels forced and it's just so annoying. Cause I feel like sometimes I'm watching TV with my very straight masculine husband And it's awkward to have to continuously see, if I wanted to watch a gay LGBT movie, I would watch an LGBT movie Where it's like, you can't even sit down to have a normal, uh, you know, a normal movie night without, not just one scene, without several, uh, scenes Of not just men making out, of men doing it. And it's like, well, this is a fuck, my, my husband doesn't wanna see this. This is awkward. And it's not because he's anti.
You just said that.
Not homophobic, he's just not gay.
Well, I don't like to see it either.
Yeah.
I don't like to see it either. I get very uncomfortable. Even in, even in heterosexual, like, strong sex scenes, I don't like them. So I think that's normal. But it's funny you say that because I saw that, uh, Lil Nas, Lil Nas, whatever his name is, Nasty Boy. He put out a tweet saying, uh, for, for you women that bring your super straight boys to my concerts, like, I don't want them to be looking at me With those eyes, like, like, I guess that he has a very sexual, um, you know, Homosexual dances or whatever, however he performs. And again, it's that these girls take their boyfriends who are straight males And they're probably looking at it like a little weird. And so he put out a whole tweet about it. Saying to not bring your boyfriends to, to, to his concert if they're just gonna be looking like that on first row. It's what he said.
Um, speaking of Hollywood, Let's talk about our boy Ye going nuts, bro. Ye, every, big Gemini energy. Every time that man, like, somebody's like, put out a public service announcement, somebody take Ye's phone away now.
I wanna be his social media manager. Nah, I'm gonna put it out there.
We don't need that because, because I'm gonna be the one that's like, let's keep going, yeah.
Keep going.
Let's go screenshot now.
It's gonna be me. It's gonna, everyone's gonna try to manage him down and I'm gonna be the one that's like, you gotta post more, expose more people.
Ye has gone at the two most powerful entities in all of human existence. He's gone against the bankers and Kris Jenner.
Alright.
The very, the very devil on earth.
The very top of, the top of the most influential, comalistic, most powerful sources in all of humanity, Kris Jenner and the bankers. Beef last week started with Adidas. So he was calling on Adidas because apparently they had a meeting without him and they were copying his styles. And also he was going after Gap. And now he says that he's not gonna work with any corporations anymore. He's still going to meet his contracts. I think he has a contract with Adidas to twenty twenty-six and then the other one to twenty thirty. But at the same time, he's just gonna put out his own Ye clothing lines, Ye stuff, because he's realizing that they're using him for his creativity, Seeing his ideas, finessing it, maybe changing a lot of it, a little bit, and then putting out their own products, really inspired by Ye. So he's like, F you, I'm gonna do my own thing.
Well, Adidas has redone their entire sneaker lines and all of them look like Yeezys. Every single Adidas shoe looks like a Yeezy now.
Yeah, so, so. Yeah, so, so that's why he's saying F you to Adidas. Um, he was doxing everybody, it was actually hilarious. He put the entire board of executives on his Instagram, they took him down, then he posted them again, with like, it's all love captions, which is actually pretty smart, we should, we should think about that. Um, but the real beef right now, a few hours ago, he said that he was going against the bankers. He's like, my fights are different.
He told us, I am built, I am built like y'all, like, y'all are out here having normal fights, I'm fighting the bankers.
Bro, I like nearly died when I saw that, where is it? I nearly died, he said, I be having problems with heads of banks, I got different kinds of problems, like. Look.
I still feel like going at Kris Jenner is more bold than going at the bankers.
I don't know, dude, we all know the bankers are, you know, we, we just, we just know who the bankers are. But it's, it's not really him going after Kris Jenner right now, it's Ray J. So Ray J is trying to expose Kim and Kris, saying that they're using his name and slandering his name on their show. And saying that, I, I mean, I don't watch the show, so I don't know, but what, what Ray J is saying is that. Um, there was, that Kris and Kim, uh, coordinated the whole leak of the sex tape, which is what most people said, say. And that now they're tarnishing his name, and that there was another sex tape, and that they even, they were even coordinating to drop that one as well. And then he posted all of Kanye's text messages between him and Ray J, when Kanye was asking him for the, for the USB drive or the computer. Wherever he had the second sex tape, when he went to fly and got it for Kim, and whatnot. Um, so, I don't know where the saga is at this moment, but I do know that he exposed it all on social media through a live. They actually cut his live, so people were joking on Twitter, and on Instagram, saying that it was Chris. That Chris had called, had called Zuckerberg, and was like, yo, you gotta call this guy, you gotta cut his life, you gotta cut his life, he's getting too wild. Um, we're gonna see where that ends up with.
Pray for Kanye, y'all, pray for Kanye.
Kanye, cause he's just, you know.
Kanye's always out here fighting the fight. You remember the time that he told Jay-Z, Jay-Z, don't send your goons to kill me?
In a concert.
Concert in LA. That man's out there speaking the truth, we all wish that we could.
Listen, guys, before we wrap up, don't forget that we have some new merch, so go to wakeupwithlinda.com, while we still work on our, on our new website. And, uh, purchase whatever amazing designs.
Once again, we need your support, we need your support, we're fully funded, no lizard people, no Illuminati to help out the mostly peaceful Latinas.
Absolutely, and please, uh, don't forget to subscribe, share, and like our video. Uh, we're actually growing, I think, at a pretty steady pace, according to our YouTube insights, so that's wonderful. Uh, but with that being said, we're, we're, we're wrapping up, and we will see you next time.
See you guys next week, have a great one.